Okay, it is six o'clock, so I will call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the County Board for December the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Will the clerk call a roll, please?
Summers.
President.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Finch Theronat.
Here.
Bulkin. Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Rose.
Esri.
Here.
Portato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
King.
Here.
Lachshin.
Here.
McGuire. Michaels.
Present.
Pasalacqua.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Straub.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Okay, there's a quorum present and the meeting is called to order. Would the clerk read the notice of the meeting, please?
Notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the County Board, Champaign County, Illinois, will convene on December eighth, two thousand twenty-one, six P. M. in the Shields-Carter Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, seventeen seventy-six East Washington Street in Urbana, Illinois, in said county, Illinois, for the purpose of appointing a new county board member to fill the vacancy, the vacated District eleven board seat and any other business pending before the board, which said meeting shall continue in session from day to day until the completion of said business.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Next is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Straub. Let's have it. I'll second.
Which one?
Ms. Straub.
Okay, Ms. Straub, second Ms. Lachshin.
Yes.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is public participation. Any members of the public wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we close public participation. Next is communications from the board. Okay, seeing none, we're down to new business. Can I get a motion for adoption of resolution number two zero two one dash five three, I'm sorry, three five three, appointing Wayne Williams as county board member in District eleven to fill Tatiana Ammon's unexpired term ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two?
So move Rodriguez.
So move Rodriguez. Can I get a second? Mr. Store. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think we need to count. Those in favor, raise your hands. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Those opposed? Two, three, four, five, six. Okay, the motion carries. Next, we have administration of the oath of office to the new county board member by the county clerk. Welcome, Mr. Williams. Okay, is there any other business before the board? Seeing none, I call the meeting adjourned.
Chris, sit down. All right, it's 6:32. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Champaign County Board Committee of the Whole to order. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Carter.
Here.
Coward. Esri.
Here.
Portato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
King.
Here.
Lachin.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Pasalaqua. Paul.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Store.
Here.
Strobb.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Taylor. Thorson.
Here.
Vanage Theronot.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Wolken. Patterson.
Here. Could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved to Strobb.
Second, Summers.
All right. Is there any discussion or amendments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right. All right, next is the approval of the minutes from September 30th, 2021, Special Finance Meeting, and the November 9th, 2021, Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Carter.
All right, I have Goss, Carter. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Ms. Michaels?
Just very quickly on the agenda, if we could change B to November 9th versus 30th?
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, next up is public participation. Don't see any members of the public. Ma'am, do you have any comments? Not paying attention. All right, seeing none, moving on to communications. Do you have any board communications, Ms. Esri?
Thank you. I have a email to read in tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I regret that I cannot attend tonight's meeting in person as I am recovering from a thankfully mild breakthrough case of COVID-19. In December of 2019, I was appointed to serve the remainder of Dr. Farron's term on the CU MTD Board. This past August, I sent my application for reappointment over to Ms. Cluppell's office for reappointment, and upon seeing tonight's agenda, I was greatly disappointed to see that she did not choose to continue my appointment. I hope that you, the county board, will reconsider. Over the past two years, I have tried my best to do my duty as a trustee to consult with members of the community and our employees whenever possible, and to ensure to the best of my ability that taxpayer and district funds and resources are being managed wisely. There has been a pattern of selective reappointments over the years. Trustees, both Democratic and Republican, are typically reappointed if they are compliant with the wishes of CU MTD's professional staff. If they are not team players, their appointments are simply not renewed. This has resulted in poor, arguably nonexistent oversight over the management of the district. There are many instances where it has cost taxpayers substantial sums of money. This practice needs to end tonight. Our constituents and taxpayers, or their elected representatives, need to be choosing the district board. The employees of the district should not be choosing the board which supervises their own positions. I deeply appreciate your careful consideration over this appointment. Sincerely, Phil Facella Jr. Thanks.
Thanks. Is there any other communications? All right, seeing none. Moving on, Justice Social Services. Mr. McGuire?
Thank you. Justice Social Services. Monthly reports, all reports are available on each department's webpages through the department's Reports page. And the Probation and Court Services report is available, and they'll be put on, placed on file. And then further information is Rose Grant's Reentry Financial Report, also. For information only. Then other business, I have no other business. No Chair's report. And there's no items for consent. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next we have Policy Personnel Appointments.
Thank you. Monthly Human Resources Report is on file and in your packet. There are some appointments and reappointments. I'd like to, an omnibus motion for Items Number Roman numeral eight, A, two, A, B, and C. Resolution appointing James Nonnen to Clement Cemetery Association, unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023. Resolution appointing David Bright to the Nelson Moore Fairfield Drainage District, unexpired term ending August 31st, 2022. Resolution appointing Lucas Rogers to the Nelson Moore Fairfield Drainage District, unexpired term ending August 31st, 2023. Thank you. All in favor of the...
Chris, who was the first?
Huh?
Who did the motion?
I'm looking for a motion. Motion.
And the motion is, the motion is A, B, and C, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion by Diane Michaels, second by Jenny Lachin. Thank you. All in favor of the omnibus motion indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Resolution. Number D. Resolution appointing Isa Isana to, Republican, to Champagne-Urbana Mass Transit District Board, term January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Strobb.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Carter.
Okay.
If I, if I may add, I would personally like to see that tabled for a later date.
Okay. There is a motion to table this, this resolution to a later date. Let's see, procedure would be to obtain a second, I guess?
Second.
Stan Harper, second. Oh, Jacob Paul, second, sorry. All in favor of them? Oh, speak to the motion.
Yeah, can I just ask like a logistical question? If we table it, does that just mean it's like in limbo forever? Like, can it, another person be, like, or should we just vote it down if we want a different person?
Kyle, I think you better help us out here.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, to table it kind of suggests that we're, we would consider the same resolution later potentially. I think that it would be more decisive and productive to just vote it down.
Ms. Coward?
Usually when you table something, you give a date when it can come back up.
Ms. Carter?
I was just wondering, was this the...
You, you might put your mic on, please. Or speak into the mic. Red but, oh.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. I had an inquiry from Mr. Phil Facella, and he was wondering about this position as well.
Okay.
I did hear in the background that you guys may have pulled his voter's card, and him and his dad has the same name. So he's a Republican and his dad is a Democrat. So he wants to know, that's why I was inquiring about if he was the only one, the only applicant for this position. Thank you.
Did I understand you to say that there may be some confusion about who's being appointed?
Yes.
Kyle?
Samantha, when you said like the confusion over the father and son, was that in reference to Phil? Okay.
Phil Facella and his dad both have the same name. So the son is Republican and the dad is Democrat.
Okay. Kind of sounds like a table with two... No? Stan?
I, I think if you got the motion on the floor, or you take a vote, if we want to vote it down, vote it down. That's what I'll be doing.
Kyle?
The motion on the floor right now is to table it, so we would have to deal with that and then vote on the...
Okay, so if we're gonna vote on the motion, we're, we're gonna have to vote, vote down the tabling. Wayne?
I, I would just prefer that we vote no to table and just vote on the main motion.
Thank you. All righty. If there's no other discussion, then we'll vote on tabling the motion. All in favor to table the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
The nays have it. We can discuss the motion further. If anybody has, would like to discuss the motion. Okay, this is a little new territory for me, but let's go on. All in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Isu Isantu to the Champagne-Urbana Mass Transit District Board indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Nay. The motion is defeated. Currently vacant appointments, I think, are mostly for cemeteries and drainage districts and available at the county's website. The county clerk has a monthly report on page 16. I, I don't know of any other business. Chair doesn't have a report, and the items to be placed on the consent agenda are Item Roman numeral eight, A numeral two, A, B, and C. Mr. Patterson?
All right, thanks. Next on the agenda is Finance. Ms. Portato?
All right, number one, Budget Amendment 21-00060-Fund-091, Animal Control Department 247, Animal
247 Animal Warden Services, Fund 091 Animal Control, Department 047 Animal Control Admin, Increased Appropriations $23,144, Increased Revenue $23,000, $22,325. Reason additional costs incurred in fiscal year 2021, Facility Security, Vehicle Damages and Repairs, Ballistic Vests, and Additional Revenues are also reflected in a memo in your packet. Do I have a motion? Mary, do I have a second? Sorry, I saw Ms. Jim first, sorry. I'll try to look that way. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Budget Amendment 21-00061, Fund 080 General Corporate, Department 026 County Treasurer, Increased Appropriations $1,050, Increased Revenue $0, Required Payout of Benefits to a Previous Employee Totalling $827, and Current Employee Maxed Out in Comp Time and Required Payment of Overtime at About $200. Do I have a motion? Dan, second? Mr. Thorson? Discussion? Clerk, Treasurer is here. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Budget Amendment 21-00063, Fund 080 General Corporate, Department 030 Circuit Clerk, Increased Appropriations $538, Increased Revenue $0. Reason, the Circuit Clerk had received the AOIC grant of $8,000 for 2022 Expungement and Sealing Event. They had planned to spend it all, but they had an opportunity to get some radio ads this year in 2021 for that event. The Circuit Clerk budget does not have the surplus spending authority to absorb this cost, so they're asking us basically to move the money that we had allocated in 2022 to put it into 2021 at $538. Do I have a motion? Mr. Esri? Ms. Lachin, second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Budget Transfer 21-00004, Fund 630 Circuit Clerk, Operation and Administration, Department 030 Circuit Clerk, Amount $68,000. Reason, Transfer Personnel Savings from Elimination of Financial Manager Position to Nonpersonnel Line in Order to Lock In 2021 Costs Prior to 1-1 2022 Price Increases. There's No General Fund Budget or Expenditure Impact in Fiscal Year 2021 or Fiscal Year 2022. Do I have a motion? Lorraine, first, do I have a second? Carter, second. Discussion? Mr. McGuire?
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you. I should also mention the Circuit Clerk is here and has sent out several communications about this. Ms., Mr. Esri?
I think most of us probably know why, but probably should, Jim, you should probably truly state your reason for the record as to why you're accusing yourself.
My spouse is, is Stacks Incorporated.
Thank you. I think we all learned more about Stacks Incorporated, plethora of office equipment than we had ever known, we didn't know, in the last week. Any, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that carries. Is everybody cool if I do the next four together as an omnibus? All right, Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Execute a Deed of Conveyance of the County's Interest or the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase, Permanent Parcel 14-03-01-459-010. Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of the Appropriate Certificate of Purchase, Permanent Parcel 15-025-0423. Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Sign Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase, Permanent Parcel Number 04-006-0008. Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Assign a Mobile Home Tax Sale Certificate of Purchase, Permanent Parcel Number 04-006-0228. Do I have a motion? Michaels, first, do I have a second? Mr. Summers, second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The auditor is here. Does anybody want to speak with the auditor? Seeing nobody, State's Attorney, Renewal of State's Attorney Appellate Prosecutor Program for Fiscal Year 22. We do this every year. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, do I have a second? Mr. Summers? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? And Circuit Clerk, Ordinance Revising Civil Fees to Be Charged by the Clerk of the Circuit Clerk, just for transparency sake, this is, has to do with fees that have to do with foreclosures being down because of the stipulation from the state. Does, do I have a motion? Wayne, do I have a second? Carter? Discussion? Diane?
Just a quick question. It's unusual that fees go down, but I wonder if there are other fees that we'll be making adjustments... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McGrath. Other fees that we will be making adjustments for in the future, because a lot of times we go through a fee schedule every year or every couple of years. Now, I want to make sure that we kind of get ahead of the game, if you will.
So, two things have happened here. One is the Supreme Court has issued a new record on, a new manual on record keeping, which means a lot of the codes that we use for cases that get filed with the county are different now. And so, in that ordinance that I presented to you, it shows all the new codes that got changed as a result of that. They did not change the fees that go with most of the cases irrespective of what they're called, except for the residential mortgage cases, and that actually changed as a result of that case from Will County, not by statute. So, in June, the Supreme Court ruled that those fees were unconstitutional, and that's why they went down according to that schedule that I gave you all in one of my fabulous memos. So, that's the only fee we anticipate that there's going to be a change in. However, you know as well as I do that the Supreme Court can change its mind at any time and change those fees as well. That's all we know right now. Mm-hmm?
You mentioned that some of the fees were ruled to be unconstitutional. Is that gonna, is there gonna be a negative financial impact for your office or the county?
It has an impact on all the counties, and, and you could see in the memo, the fees went down in one category about $550, another category about $400, and another category about $100. And so, yes, it'll have an impact.
No, I'm sorry, what, what I meant was, are we gonna, are we gonna have to pay back any fees that were paid to us because the fees were ruled unconstitutional?
I just had a two-hour meeting today with our outside attorney, Keith Breiling, who represents several counties in that case that came from Will County, to figure out what that impact is going to be. When those fees get collected, 2% stays with our county and 98% gets paid over to the state. But guess what? In the case that got filed on this, the plaintiffs are asking us to refund all the money, not just the 2% that we collected. And why? Because the state cannot be sued in state court. They have to be sued in the Court of Claims. We have that same argument, so it's going through a whole bunch of different motions right now, but we don't know in the end who is going to be responsible for payback, what the payback period will be, and what the monetary impact is yet.
Any other questions? That's a good dialogue, thank you. Thank you. And if you could keep us informed, and obviously in, between you and in conversation with Tammy, if there's gonna be a financial impact?
We probably won't know the answer to this for at least a year.
Right.
Because there are a lot of motions going on in that Will County case now, and there's a lot of questions about, is it gonna continue in Will County? Is it gonna continue in the Court of Claims? And we don't know the answer yet.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Other business? I don't have anything on a chair's report, designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda, A1234, B1234, D1, and E1.
All right, and for other business, we have, there, there are two memos, one from the clerk about his vote-by-mail sorting machines, and one from the sheriff updating on the RFP for the full-body security scanner. Does anybody have any discussion around those items?
I'll just say this, like, the elected officials, they, we gave them the authority to buy these things, but they want to keep us in the loop about how it's progressing. So, they both wanted to put in these memos to let us know how it's progressing, so.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call this meeting adjourned.